Where's Kevin?
Could I have everyone's attention if everyone would take a seat, please? Welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, 6:30 Tuesday, May 16th. A regular scheduled board meeting. We're going to begin our meeting with our invocation from Pastor Leonard Himes of the Henry County Fire Rescue and he will also lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would stand.
Thank you. Let's pray together. Our Father in Heaven, we come to Thee once again on this day. Another month You've given us, another day, and yet indeed, another hour. And Lord, we invite You to meet with us in the agenda and the things to be discussed this evening. And Lord, may we look at the horizon and may You widen our hearts to see the future. I pray You would bless our great county, once again, all those that labor daily in the vineyard, Lord, their homes, their families. And Lord, we lift up our public safety tonight, our firefighters, police officers that protect and serve in this great place so that we can dwell, and, Lord, live the lives You've chosen for us. So help us tonight, meet with us in this meeting, and we'll thank You and praise You in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May you sit.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. We're going to begin with a presentation from our tax assessment from John Self, and then we're also going to have a presentation from Michael Harris, our Tax Commissioner as well.
Chair, Board, good evening. Thank you for having the Board of Assessors on the agenda. It's always a privilege. We always appreciate the opportunity to communicate to everyone what we actually do, so thank you for that. To begin, I am John Self with the Henry County Board of Tax Assessors, and having a little bit of technical difficulty here. Sorry about that. So introduction to the Tax Assessors' Office. The Board of Assessors is a five-man board, and they consider the Tax Assessor's Office information in the performance of their duties. That is the data that we compile as a staff. It's similar to a constitutional authority. The Georgia Department of Revenue provides oversight in terms of our rules and regulations and how good we do follow those, how we follow those. The Department of Audits provides oversight in terms of our results. They give us an annual report card. We have forty great employees, thirty-four appraisers, and six administrative staff members. Our primary function is our mission statement, and that is that we determine the fair market value of all taxable real and personal property in the county. We annually produce a digest by law, and that digest must be uniform, and it must reflect fair market value as defined in 48-52, and we'll go over some of that in just a second. The date of valuation each year is January 1st, so we take a snapshot of what that property is doing on each January 1st. The tax digest represents all the taxable property, and it also includes exemptions and covenants. The uniformity clause is a constitutional requirement, and that is that essentially houses must be appraised like houses, convenience stores must be appraised like convenience stores, and so on. And then all of the values have to comply with fair market values defined in 48-52, which most people understand. That is what a knowledgeable buyer would pay, what a willing seller would accept at a arms-length bona fide sale. The assessment process, we currently value about ninety-seven thousand properties annually. In that process, we look at about fifteen thousand deeds, we review MLS data, we process permits, development and building permits, and we process exemptions. Timeline, again, January 1st is the snapshot that we take of the property. That's when our date of valuation is. After that date, the data that we have compiled will go through a valuation process, consider returns up until April 1st. This year, we mailed the notice of assessments for real property on April the 28th. On personal property, they went out last Friday, May 12th. Around July 1st, we take the digest and we deliver it to the Tax Commissioner's office, and Mr. Harris will talk about that in just a moment. Common misconception, and we get this a lot, and that misconception is that the Tax Assessor's Office raises values when the county needs money, and that is not so. We follow fair market value by law, as we just discussed. So we're following a market, and that market is what buyers and sellers are doing within real estate, within personal property. So we're reporting what that market's doing. We don't set it. As an example, this is the collapse, the real estate collapse, from starting around 2007, 2008. This is an actual property that was appraised by the Henry County Board of Tax Assessors. You can see in 2007, the property was worth $514,000. And real quickly, you can see us follow that value all the way down to the low point, which was 2012. And then after that, the market started to improve, value started to increase, and we followed those, and we tracked those, and we reported those in these digests. So there it is in 2017, and what I'm doing here is just illustrating, bracketing, showing you what it looks like. Obviously, today, the market has increased, and it's continuing to increase into the current digest, which is the 2023 digest. So what does the following the market mean? So first thing we do is identify the property through permits, plans, inspections, and the like. Then we define that property based on quality, use codes, and all of the structural elements that would apply or contribute to value, age, size, so forth. Then we put it in our CAMA system. That's Computer-Assisted Mass Appraisal Software. Within that software, we create uniformity. The internal algorithms assure us of that, and it is an accepted methodology for valuation of property. After that, we start looking at sales. The first thing we do is look at the broader, the global group, if you will. So we look at thousands of sales of properties. In houses, we may go down to a neighborhood level. Even depending on what we're doing, we could even look at a single home if it was special in some way. And then we look at qualified sales, and we make a comparison. And there, the valuation process goes to the three traditional approaches to value, and that's the sales approach, the income approach, and the cost approach. We will apply one or all three, up to all three, in a particular case, depending on what the nature of the subject property is. And from there, we get into statistical testing that involves a sales ratio that points to our central tendency. That's really our report card number, if you will. We also look at the COD, which is coefficient of dispersion, which measures the uniformity that we talked about, and then PRD, which measures assessment bias, which considers that we're not mistreating low-priced properties or mistreating high-priced properties. They're treated fairly. And that is done independently, again, through the Department of Audits annually. So that's a little bit what we do, but really, I think the question that we're seeing from taxpayers in general is, why are residential values so high? And this goes, the question goes beyond sales, right? What we're talking about. So I considered some of the major factors, and this is not all the factors that impact values in Henry County or anywhere for that matter, but these are the ones that are really a driver right now, and that is interest rates. The cost of money, the availability of money is a major factor in real estate. Supply, how many homes are available to be purchased? Demand, how many buyers are there, how many that are competing, you know, to try to get a home? Locational factors, and then transplants, people moving in, what does that look like? So this is what we've seen over the past two years, and keep in mind, the values that I'm talking about are based on last January, so January 1st, almost six months ago. But at that time, we were seeing historically low interest rates that have impacted the real estate market. So more people had access to money, and that money was cheap, so they could borrow more. They could pay more for a home. The supply, not very many houses out there. There were bidding wars going on for homes. It wasn't uncommon to see seventy contract offers for a single house. Think about that. You had seventy buyers competing for a single home. The locational factors. Henry County's a great location. Georgia is on fire nationally. People are moving here. We'll talk about that in a second. Schools, interstate systems, climate, water. Believe it or not, there's parts of the country, you turn on the faucet, it may not flow. Think about that. Henry County Water and Sewer, they do a great job. You know, and then we get into the transplants. Georgia's very attractive. People are relocating here, and specifically to Henry County. Jobs, that's one of the reasons. They can find employment. We see, I think Josh has spoken to the board here, that I think we led Georgia, or we were close in the top three maybe, in terms of job growth. Employees need places to live. You know, so, and then the housing market. It has gone up, as we've seen, but nationally, Henry County, Georgia is still a great value when you're competing with other majors cities across the nation. Atlanta is very attractive. Henry County, again, specifically. And then the lifestyle, you know, we're still, the cost of living, again, with these national cities, large cities, we're still very affordable, so people can maybe enjoy life a little bit more, you know. So that's where we were, I think, as of January 1st, when the assessment notices in this digest was created. Now, moving forward, we do see, hopefully, a light at the end of the tunnel. We track sales even today, and it is starting to flatten out and not grow to the extent that it was. So we might see, hopefully, some normalized growth moving forward. That concludes my portion of the presentation. I'll hand it over to Commissioner Harris.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris, come up, please.
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, members of the board and public and staff. John handled all the technical aspects of everything. Mine's going to be relatively short and simple. As he spoke, his office does a lot of, again, the pre-work that goes into the generation of the bill. My office really just kind of works on, once that's, got it, yeah, got it here, once the bill, once that information comes back to our office, we really have two principal functions, perfecting the digest that John mentioned, that's going to all the valuations of all the property, real and personal, within the county, and then from there, the billing and collecting of the taxes. Again, it's collaborative process, working with several entities, working together. That includes... Gotcha. The down arrow. Tax Assessor's Office, John just mentioned, Test Commissioner's Office, we'll talk about that in just a minute, and again, responsibility for setting the millage rate for the county, the Board of Education, which sets the millage rate for all the school taxes, Board of Commissioners, the Cities of Stockbridge, McDonough, Hampton, and Locust Grove, and right now, as it stands today, only the Cities of Hampton and McDonough have a city tax, so we work closely with them, but there's also additional fees and other portions of the digests that still have to be perfected from all the cities. The Georgia Department of Revenue, everything gets submitted to Georgia Department of Revenue at the very end. There's also the Water Authority that we also work with as well, since there is a bond that they have on our tax bills also. So just real quickly, you know, John, again, all the information as far as leading up to what generates the values, I just want to kind of go through and do this every year, kind of a real quick example of what happens to my taxable if the property value goes up, like we're seeing this year, but the millage rate remains the same. This is just as an example. If a property value that increases from two hundred, from two hundred thousand to two hundred and forty thousand, which represents a twenty percent increase, that new, that value, two hundred and forty thousand times your forty percent gives you your assessed value of ninety-six thousand dollars. So again, once John and his team, they go through the process of determining the fair market value, we take all those, divide that by, multiply that by forty percent, gives our assessed values, and that's what people are taxed on. So that assessed value times the millage rate, again, here in the county, that's been fixed for the last several years at twelve point seven three three for millage rate. So give a non-home-stated property a county tax of one thousand two hundred and twenty-two thousand thirty-seven cents. Now, again, as I said earlier, and I'm going to kind of touch on it a little bit, the majority of our tax bills, you know, this twelve point seven three three millage rate represents about forty-some percent of our tax bill, the majority of our tax bill, about fifty-eight, fifty-nine percent, is actually represented by the school board, and you'll see that in the diagram coming up. So, and it'd be the same process, that assessed value times their millage rate of twenty, which give their school tax. So that value represents an increase of about two hundred dollars on a versus a non-home-stated property. And again, a homesteaded property would not see an increase in county taxes, and every year, we make it a point to kind of go through this and talk about the value of applying for homestead. The year you apply for, a resident applies for homestead, their county, their value, their property value is frozen at that level. To go back to the point that Mr. Self made, for those who would have applied for homestead in the year that that value was at its lowest, they would still be getting taxed on a county, from a county standpoint, at that low rate. If you don't apply for your homestead, then again, the provision does not apply, so that's the difference. While the initial impact is about two hundred dollars for that first year, it can certainly grow substantially in subsequent years as your value continues to increase. So that's the great provision, and one of the great benefits that residents in Henry County have, being here with this provision as relates to our county taxes. Again, the frozen provision does not apply to school taxes or improvements made to the House. So that sixty percent of taxation that we see in our tax bill, that is not protected by the frozen provision. Again, just kind of a little more information, it went into, so it went into effect by local legislation back in 2004, and it was done because we're, back in 2004, they're seeing some of the same issues that we're seeing right now, rapid growth within the county, valuations were going up, and the concern was, a lot of the tenured residents, and our senior residents, were being priced out because of the increase in their valuation. So that's why the board at the time, back in 2004, enacted the frozen provision to kind of help solidify and protect those folks that were, the valuations were going up. Again, only includes the primary residents, up to five contiguous acres. Base year is based on the year prior to your filing for the homestead, so the prior year. If you apply today, the base year would be 2022. Exemptions automatically reviewed from year to year, so long as the resident continues to occupy the home. Now, there is the, there is an exemption specifically for school taxes. That kicks in at, it's all age-generated and age-driven, so beginning at age sixty-two, you begin to see a decrease in your school taxes as well. And again, homeowner pays the base value for the county, and water portion of the bill, even if the value increases beyond the base year. So where's the money go? So every year, we also show this diagram, as I just stated, so county government, you'll see that percentage, and the numbers are a little bit small, but the county government percentage represents about thirty-seven percent, that's the twelve point seven three three mills. The Water Authority bond is a two-mill line item on every tax bill. That covers the Water Authority's bond, and that's at five percent. And then the school board, M and O, that's Maintenance and Operations, represents about fifty percent of the total school taxes, and an additional eight percent is the school bond for, again, different capital projects that the school board puts on. So again, overall, the county represents about thirty-seven percent, the school represents about fifty-eight, fifty-nine percent. And I'll also pull another slide, just real quick before I was coming in, again, apologize for the little bit fuzzy, but this just shows the dispersments over the last couple of years, and give you a more numerical description of exactly what those numbers look like over the last two years. So what was distributed to each of those entities, the Board of Education, about one hundred and eighty-four million in 2021. Fast forward to 2022, that number was about two hundred and twenty-two million, as opposed to, as compared to the county in 2021, that number was ninety-two million, and last year, about one hundred and fourteen million, again, you see the water, and again, the City of McDonough, and again, this last year, the City of Hampton was added in as well. And again, we distribute the funds weekly as funds are collected to all the different entities, the county, the city, the school board, for their bond, and for the Water Authority and their respective cities. That's all I had in reference to that. I don't know if there's any specific questions to add. I also wanted to touch base real quickly, because we've been getting a lot of phone calls, as I assume that the commission, the board also may have. Early this year, the governor passed a homeowner's tax relief grant, and it's going to be tied specifically to those residents that already have a homestead in place. So I just wanted to kind of go through real quickly, kind of what that means and what it's going to look like. In essence, it is eighteen thousand of additional property exemption for all qualified home-stated properties. So if you already have your homestead in place, and again, that deadline ended in April, and Mr. Self and his office are going through the review of those now, then that would apply to those residents. The exemption applies to, after all other state and local homesteads exemptions apply, and it would be applied, that eighteen thousand dollar exemption would be applied to the millage rate, except for the bond. So we saw earlier, the school bond, that would not be subject to that exemption. The credit must be shown on the property tax bill as a credit. Again, this is a brief, it's a quick example that was given by the Department of Revenue. Again, eighteen thousand dollar exemption amount times your applicable millage rate, which is yet to be determined, would give you the amount of your credit. So in this case, they're taking a county, it's a four point two-two times, taking a millage rate of four point two-two, in this case, in this example, times the eighteen thousand dollar exemption, would be seventy-five dollars there for the school maintenance operation. In this case, the school M and O bond, or millage rate was seventeen point seven five, which gave a credit of three hundred and nineteen dollars, a fire district of two point five mil. Again, so in this example, you're looking at a credit of about four hundred and forty dollars. There are still some mechanics that need to be worked out from the state level. We had a conference this past week. We're still working through some of the details, but just to give everyone an idea of kind of what they can expect, this will be shown as a line item on every one of the tax bills, so people have a better idea of, so there should be something shown. As we get more information from the state, we'll certainly be putting that information out on our website and other venues as well, and social media as well. But running our numbers initially, we're anticipating somewhere along about five hundred dollars, we anticipate, per home-stated property in that area. Again, some of those details still need to be fleshed out on the state level, but, you know, we're excited about that. What I also wanted to touch bases real quickly is, we've gotten a lot of calls recently, people who've gotten their tax returns back, and they see a tax refund, either two hundred and fifty dollars for single filers, or five hundred dollars for joint filers. That is not this. That is an income tax refund done by the state. This is specifically for your property taxes. This will be reflected on the property tax bill, not adding to your, with your income tax. So again, just wanted to run through that real quick, and again, happy to address any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris, for you and Mr. Self for those presentations. I guess now we'll move on to the consent agenda. If we could have the county manager, please come forward and do our consent agenda.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. This is your consent agenda for Tuesday, May 16th, 6:30 p.m. Under the airport, we have a resolution approving a G-DOT contract accepting state funding reimbursement for airport hangar development in the amount of two million six hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and a local match in the amount of eight hundred and ninety-three three, eight hundred and ninety-three three three three, utilizing capital improvement CIP funds. Under the Department of Transportation, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners awarding bid number twenty-three dash forty for an annual contract for the purpose of liquid asphalt emulsion for the Henry County Department of Transportation, Department to Southeast Emulsions of Perry, Georgia. This is a unit price agreement with no fixed quantities. Under Facility Maintenance, we have a resolution awarding a seal bid number twenty-three dash forty-three to Natural Enclosures Fence Company, LLC, McDonough, Georgia, in the amount of four hundred and thirty thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars for installing fencing and gates around the work camp facilities and equipment yard to provide a secure perimeter around the property. ARPA funds will be utilized for this purchase. Under Senior Services, we have a resolution awarding bid number twenty-three dash forty-six to Overhead Door Company of Atlanta for new automatic doors and installation at Locust Grove Event Center, Heritage Senior Center, and Hen Valley Senior Center in the amount of seventy-five thousand nine hundred dollars. ARPA funds will be utilized for this purchase. Under the Sheriff's Office, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners accepting the GSA Online Driver Training Incentive Grant 2022 through 2024 for equipment in the amount of a thousand dollars from the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, ACCG, Local Government Risk Management Services, with no matching funds. Local Government Risk Management Services, with no matching funds. Under SPOS, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners, approving the Henry County Water Authority Utility Relocation Estimated Costs for Bridges Road at Willow Lane, in the amount of $229,503. We also have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners, approving the Henry County Water Authority Utility Relocation Estimated Costs for Selfridge Road, in the amount of $64,579. We have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners, approving a right-of-way agreement between Henry County and Georgia Department of Transportation for State Route 81, widening Phase One, Postmaster Drive to Bethany Road, located in District 1 and District 3. And then we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners, approving the reimbursement of wetland and stream credits to the Henry County Water Authority for Rock Quarry Road Widening, in the amount of $57,352, located in District 4. Finally, under Transportation Planning, we have a resolution requesting $200,000 of Safe Streets and Roads for all SS4A Planning and Demonstration Grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation, and committing to provide $50,000 in local match. Madam Chair, this ends the consent agenda.
Are there any questions from the board regarding the consent agenda? Could I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Second.
Got a motion in a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Annexation, 23-02.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Henry County Community. What we have for you tonight, again, this is just to bring you up to speed on an annexation request from the City of Stockbridge. The request, okay, is a request for 140 Somerset Hills, consistent 1.186 acres. The parcel that's highlighted in green on the map here, everything you see highlighted, or in green, is actually the City of Stockbridge, so it is contiguous to this parcel. Again, this is the future land use map, identifying the parcel that's in green. Everything in white is considered to be in the City of Stockbridge. So, City of Stockbridge is requesting annexation of, we're using 100% method, from the current zoning classification of PD to the City of Stockbridge equivalent plan new development zoning district. So, the future land use map designation for this property is low-density residential, so as long as they don't change anything moving forward, the project will remain as a PD. And so, staff has done the evaluation of the property, and has identified that the request does not create a significant change in the surrounding land uses, and the future, or the future land use designation of the property. So, it's basically, they're just annexing to the City of Stockbridge.
Can you go back to the map?
I can.
The last map that you showed?
This one here?
So, right there.
Okay.
So, that one house in that whole community is annexing into the City of Stockbridge?
Correct.
Interesting. Okay.
So, again, there's no reason to vote, we're just letting you know what's going on with the annexation. Yes, ma'am.
So, how do we, county manager, when it come to providing police services, how do we take that one house out, if they should dial 911 of our system?
They will, when, when the call comes in for our dispatch system, the City of Stockbridge Police Services will be dispatched for that one house.
Chairman, Board of Commissioners, I did try and do some research to determine the reason for this request of this one house, and one other house as well. Chair, whether the reasons I got, I think, are really not worthy of me sharing with this board. It was not worth the conversation, from my opinion.
Okay.
So, it doesn't bother me.
Okay, all right. All right.
All right, moving to the next. Again, another annexation request for 802 Black Diamond. Again, it's highlighted in the, I guess that's bluish-green. It is contiguous to the City of Stockbridge, that's, that's in the, I guess, the other green that you see on the, on the map. Again, future land use map, parcels highlighted in green, contiguous to the white portion of the map that is inside the City of Stockbridge. Again, staff did not see, have any objection, that it's creating a significant change in surroundings, or the future land use designation.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. That's all I have.
Okay. All right. County Attorney, item A on our agenda, the county attorney has asked that item to be removed, she will bring it back at another upcoming BOC meeting. Next item is item B.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, remaining members of the board, and Henry County Community. On April the 25th, the City of Stockbridge passed Resolution 23-1565. In that resolution, the City of Stockbridge asked to withdraw from the Strategic Delivery Service Agreement between the county and the City of Stockbridge, as it pertains to the police services. So, basically, this is a snapshot, and I believe it's in Exhibit A, the actual service delivery strategic agreement that pertains to the City of Stockbridge. It's basically composed of a mutual aid agreement between Henry County, Hampton, Locust Grove, and McDonough, and then the county also has an intergovernmental agreement, separate with the City of Stockbridge. So, just to kind of give you an idea, a mutual aid agreement, basically, it's an agreement that's allowed by state law, that actually allows for different municipalities to provide aid in cases of local emergencies. And local emergencies doesn't, they do not include everyday police work, but is defined in the statute, the existence of conditions of extreme peril to the safety of persons and property within the territorial limits of a political subdivision of the state, caused by natural disasters, riots, civil disturbances, or other situations presenting major law enforcement and other public safety problems, which conditions are, or likely to be, beyond the control of the services, personnel, equipment, and facilities of the political subdivision of the state, which was required, the combined forces of other political subdivisions of the state to combat. So, for example, if, for instance, there was an active shooter in one of the cities, or what have you, in that circumstance, which is an extreme circumstance, where they would have to cover a large area, and possibly, one city municipality would not be able to do that alone, Henry County Police Department would provide mutual services. So, what we currently have with the City of Stockbridge, which is different than a mutual aid, is an internal governmental agreement. And as part of that agreement, the county currently, well, as part of that agreement, the county must provide the residents and businesses of Stockbridge the same police services it provides the residents and businesses of the unincorporated area of Henry County. So, basically, traditional police services would be provided to the City of Stockbridge. That statute, excuse me, the agreement also allows for the county to levy a uniform millage rate within the police service district, to assess a cost for police servicing the area in the City of Stockbridge. I'm sorry, that's a little big here. So, what is City of Stockbridge asking for in Resolution 23-15-65? First, the City of Stockbridge, they want to withdraw from the SDS agreement, so that it reflects that they no longer need Henry County Police Services. That's number one. Number two, they are requesting reimbursement from July of 2022 to the present, and for the next calendar year, for any police services collected by the Tax Commissioner. So, the funds that were basically levied, it is Stockbridge's position that all of that money was not spent, and they are entitled to a reimbursement. And third, the City of Stockbridge would like to enter a mutual aid agreement, similar to the agreement entered into with the cities of Hampton, Locust Grove, and McDonough. So, that is the gist of the resolution that they are requesting. So, if you look at the updated resolution before you, it's a title, Resolution Approving Amendment to the Service Delivery Strategy Agreement Regarding the City of Stockbridge. What this resolution will do, it authorizes the county manager to make such changes and modifications to the Service Delivery Strategy Agreement that accounts for Stockbridge's new police department. It also allows for the modification of the Service Strategy Agreement Regarding Henry County Police Department, excuse me, upon the modification, the Henry County Police Department shall cease to provide the residents and businesses of Stockbridge with the same police services it provides the residents and businesses of unincorporated areas of Henry County, unless otherwise agreed upon by Henry County and Stockbridge. Number three, it allows the chair or county manager to sign any documents, subject to the approval of the county attorney, to effectuate the resolution, and the clerk of commissioners to execute, attest, and seal any additional documents. It also allows the county manager to authorize, or the county manager's destiny, to access, access the taxpayer revenue collected for police services on behalf of Stockbridge that have not been used, determine if unused tax revenue for police services is owed to Stockbridge, and if this money is owed to actually transfer those funds to the City of Stockbridge. The City of Stockbridge did provide a mutual agreement that they wanted the county to sign. I did review the mutual agreement. It included, well, provisions for the Tax Commissioners and the Sheriff's Department, but their names were not included in the signature block. So, I am going through the process now, checking with the Tax Commissioner, to see if he agrees to those provisions. I will check with the Sheriff's Department, and make the modifications to the agreement as needed. But, the format in Exhibit B that they've sent to us, I don't believe is prudent to sign in the form that it is right now. So, if there are any questions, I'm ready to answer those questions.
Yes, I do have questions. Did we not, earlier this year, return funds to the City of Stockbridge with regards to police services? Wasn't it like 2 million? What was, what was, what was it that we gave them earlier this year with regards to the rollback?
So, the board approved a resolution allowing us to reimburse, or to make payment to the City of Stockbridge, beginning in July of 2022 to December 31st, 2022, and that payment has been submitted to the City of Stockbridge.
Then why are they asking for additional funds?
I, I can't speak to that, Chair. I'm not sure. I do know that we did honor the resolution that the board approved, and that payment was made to the city. I do know that when we made the initial payment, the information that had been provided by the city was not the correct banking information, and so we had to go back and correct that. But, other than that, that payment has been made to the City of Stockbridge.
So, what was that payment amount?
Chair, I believe it was about two, about 2 million dollars. 2.4?
1.2.
Okay, let me start over. 1.2 million dollars was reimbursed.
You said 1.2 million?
Yes, ma'am, that was from July to December. Yes, ma'am.
July to December.
Yes.
So, now, in January of this year, they should have, the rollback should have automatically occurred. Am I correct? Okay, come on.
Yes, I'm, the answer, yes.
Because, at the end of the day, I don't have a problem with the service deliveries agreement, them opting out, and, and going to the mutual aid. What I do have a problem with is them asking for additional funds. And so, so that's where I have a problem.
So, so Chair, we, we have remitted payment to the City of Stockbridge from July 2022 through December 31st, 2022, 1.2 million dollars. We have not remitted payment for '23, because that would be a new calendar year for us. So, that payment is due to them in the amount of 2.4 million dollars.
Okay. So, what I am saying is, this resolution says, from July of 2022, till when?
To the present. So, the City of Stockbridge's resolution indicates that they were not paid from July, they still have funds owed from July of 2022, up until the present. So, that's their perspective, which is why in the resolution that we drafted, we said that the county could assess whatever the amount was, because obviously, the City of Stockbridge assessment is not accurate. So, this gives the county manager, or her destiny, an opportunity to go to, to see what they are actually owed, and transfer those funds over, if any funds are actually owed.
Commissioner Thomas, go ahead. I'm, I'm not willing to, to, to give that type of, of authority.
Okay.
So, we can amend the SDS agreement, and go to the mutual aid, but that's it, for me. Commissioner Thomas.
My question is, during that time period of July 2022 through December 2022, did we still continue to assist the City of Stockbridge? And have we been, have we received payment for that time period, for the services that we rendered to that city?
So, Commissioner Thomas, we assist all of our cities, and so, yes, to answer your question, if calls are dispatched, and there are not city officers available to respond to those calls, we are assisting in those calls. There are some calls that are at a magnitude that they may not have the staffing or resources available. So, yes, we are assisting not only the City of Stockbridge, but our other cities as well. I will tell you that we have not invoiced the city for any services beyond basic policing services, as that would require our board to direct me to prepare something to send to the City of Stockbridge, and all of our cities for those services, beyond just normal operations. I will also say, I know Ms. Rowan mentioned the resources in what's considered an emergency. So, anytime there are not resources available, we will be responding to those calls. We have officers that may be in the area, and they are going to respond to those calls, if, if we don't have officers responding to some of those calls that have been coming in.
Well, my question goes back to what I heard you read, Attorney Rowan, about the assistance that we are supposed to provide. And I'm asking, are we over, are we going beyond what you described in this definition of what we are supposed to be doing? That was the reason for the question. Because it appears that we're doing everyday policing for the City of Stockbridge, over and beyond what you just described.
That's correct. So, basically, it appears that we are, the county's providing routine police services that would go beyond a mutual aid agreement. But, right now, we're still actually in, in a governmental agreement. I think in the resolution that the City of Stockbridge passed, they acknowledged, they acknowledged that despite the fact that their police department started in July of 2022, they have still received assistance from Henry County for routine police department work. However, based on the resolution that they're passing, now that they're saying they want to get out of the intergovernmental agreement, the county would not have to provide them routine police department services. So, but, whether or not, unless they agree upon something, and I don't know if the county wants to do that, because I don't know if the City of Stockbridge is actually ready to function independently, but...
Well, listen, they're pressing mutual aid and service delivery.
That's right.
So, we were required by our service delivery, delivery strategy, our agreement, to provide police services, because they did not have a police department. But, now that they have a police department, they want to enter into a mutual aid. So, if an officer needs help, then, you know, we would send an officer to back that officer up. I have no problems with that, but I have a problem with them saying that we owe them money. That's what I got a problem with.
Well, what we can do is, we can, if the board makes a motion, can remove the provision that allows for the county manager, or destiny, to assess tax that allows for the county manager or destiny to assess taxpayer revenue collected from police services. But another part, aspect of this resolution, it does allow the county, our county manager, to negotiate with the City of Stockbridge. So it can be a discussion where we discuss if their routine services still being provided to the City of Stockbridge, what financial contribution they're making to that, or if they want to go it alone and just have mutual aid. I mean, that's, I guess that's a discussion we can have in further negotiations, but.
What is the two million dollars covering for 2023? What are we paying for there?
So that is what the Stockbridge, what the City of Stockbridge will receive back from property taxes. Prior to them having their own police department, city residents were assessed the same property tax as an unincorporated resident. They will now receive a rollback like our other cities, because we no longer provide that service for those city residents. And so that will go to the City of Stockbridge as general revenue for them, general fund revenue for the city.
And then we reimburse them from July 1 of 2022 to December 31st of 2022.
Yes.
But they're saying that we owe them more for that time period.
They're saying that they're seeking to be reimbursed from July 2022 going forward. That is correct.
Okay. Commissioner Wilson, you got any questions?
So rollback's going to be equivalent to the other cities, like two point two two mils?
It's going to be based on their assessed value, but we do have for the City of McDonough, Locust Grove, and Hampton, a rollback amount. Yes, sir.
So they're going to get that rollback come November, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
So what are you asking us tonight?
So I'm asking you to pass the resolution presented, approving the amendment of the Service Delivery Strategy Agreement Regarding the City of Stockbridge, with the modification that the county manager or destiny, the part that indicates that the county manager or destiny is authorized to access taxpayer revenue collection, police services on behalf of Stockbridge that has not been used, be removed.
Is there a motion? You got to take the money part out.
Excuse me?
Have to take the money part out.
Oh, that's what, that's what I'm saying, that someone can make a motion.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion that we change from the SDS agreement to a mutual aid agreement, period.
So, Madam Chair, we can't do that. So we have a service delivery strategy for all of our cities.
Okay.
What the City of Stockbridge, and really, we're having to come to you all after the fact. What should have happened prior to the city coming in, creating their own police department, there should have already been an amendment to the Service Delivery Strategy, saying we no longer want to operate under an intergovernmental agreement, we want to operate absent an IGA under the SDS, and the county provides mutual aid as they do with the other three cities. So really, tonight, you all don't have the option of not saying you're not going to amend it, because you have to, because they have their own police department. And if we don't amend it, the IGA remains in effect, but we're not doing that, if that makes sense, because they have their own police department, we have our own police department. I think what I need to better understand from the board is that if there is a desire for us to start invoicing the cities, be it Stockbridge or the three other cities, for services above and beyond, and we're going to have to define what that above and beyond is, then I need to know that from the board. But I don't think, you all don't have the option not to amend the Service Delivery Strategy, because we've already given them money back, so we've acknowledged that they're operating their own police department, if that makes sense.
And so can she change the dates to January 1st to present?
Okay.
If she would change the dates to January 1st of 2023 to present time, then I can move forward with the change. But I'm not going back to July 22.
Okay. So I asked the board to approve the resolution, approving an amendment to the Service Delivery Strategy Agreement Regarding the City of Stockbridge, with the amendment in paragraph four, after now therefore be it resolved, that it be changed to, that the county manager or destiny is authorized to sex taxpayer revenue collected for police services on behalf of a Stockbridge that has not been used, determine, excuse me, or unused taxpayer revenue for police services that is owed to the City of Stockbridge from the date of January of 2023 to the present.
Correct. That's what my motion is. And then, Sherri, I want you, I'm directing staff, to move forward with additional aid that we provide that's not covered under mutual aid or service delivery. Can I get a second?
Dave.
They got a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Financial Services, Public Hearing and Adoption of the FY 2024 Proposed Budget. To participate in a public hearing, sign up via email required by 12:00 PM on May 15th to our county clerk. Bernita?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and Henry County Community. My name is Bernita Campbell, and I am the Budget Director for Henry County. Tonight is the last of two public hearings for the FY 24 budget. After the public hearing, we will hold the adoption of the 24 budget tonight. I will walk through what has already been presented during the first public hearing on May 2nd, 2023. I will cover the operating budget. Once I conclude, Angie Soro will then present the capital budget. This year's proposed budget is based on the following budget philosophy. Maintain the current military rate of 12.733 mils. Ensure our employees' compensation is market-competitive, and maintain employee benefits at no additional cost to the employees. Advance the board's priorities and strategic partnerships with organizations throughout the community. And lastly, fund essentials to maintain county services at current operating levels. Our executive summary. The proposed FY 24 operating budget is $232 million, which is up 7% or $15.1 million over last year's budget of $216.9 million. The main drivers of this year's increase are continued growth in our property taxes, current projections from our tax assessor indicate an approximate 14% year-over-year growth. However, we are conservatively budgeting a 9% year-over-year increase. This growth is due to both real and inflationary growth. We are also projecting a 3% growth rate in our sales tax revenue. Some of the major items that are included in this year's budget are the following. For our employees, we have included funding for the class and comp implementation, $10.3 million. Dollars have been set aside to fund our pension and insurance increases of $2.8 million. We have departmental funding, which includes dollars being set aside for county-wide software, maintenance contracts of $660,000, and funds for elections and voter registration of $306,000. For public safety, we have our medical and food contract increases for the jail at $1.8 million. EMA disaster response, $134,000. And for our judicial services cluster, we have court reporter fee increases, $194,000. State employee contract increases for those working in the public defender's office, $273,000. And judicial officials' county supplement increases of $155,000. This slide shows how the $232 million proposed budget is split by cluster and the related departments that fall under each. As you will notice, the cluster representing the largest share of our budget is public safety at $117 million, or 51% of the total operating general fund budget. The next slide includes additional graphical representations of the budget breakdown. The slide on the left shows the percentages by cluster. The slide on the right breaks down the $232 million proposed budget based on expenditure type. And you will notice that the bulk of the budget is spent on salaries and benefits for our employees at 78%, followed by other at 12%. And this includes our repairs and maintenance of the government facilities, utilities, printing and bonding dues, and other fees. So in compiling this year's budget and developing a recommendation for the board, we made sure that the proposed budget aligned with our five pillars of excellence. Physical stewardship, the budget is based on projected revenues, we are not using fund balance to subsidize the current budget. Integrity, we are managing our current resources with wisdom and planning for future growth by being moral, ethical, and prudent in our financial decision-making. Service, we made sure that each county department and agency had adequate funding, and that they were equipped to carry out the assigned duties and provide the services that Henry County residents and visitors expect. Accountability, we set a realistic operating budget for each county department, one that we believe can reasonably be achieved and still provide the departments with the resources needed to effectively function and provide services. Finally, this budget is collaborative. We have key partnerships with each internal department and select outside agencies, all who are working to address the needs of Henry County citizens. Shown here is our FY 24 Proposed Budget Summary for the General Fund. This is a comparative, it's small on the screen, but this is a comparative of what our original requests were versus what the proposed budget is. And as you can see, our original request far exceeded our funding capabilities of $232 million. That required us to evaluate each and every request and prioritize accordingly. While not all requests were honored at this time, we have committed to revisiting those requests later in FY 24 to determine if funding is available. So looking at the right column, you will note the projected revenues and expenditures are balanced at $232 million, and we were able to do this without utilizing fund balance. The next slide is a summary of all funds. This is what has been on display on our website and the newspaper for public viewing. This is the summary of all proposed budgets for funds for FY 24. This concludes my presentation. Are there any questions from the board?
Let's let Angie come up and do her presentation, and we'll do all questions or comments at the end.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members. Thank you again for this opportunity to come before you to present the FY 24 Capital Improvement Improvement Plan, as well as the five-year capital improvement plan. As you know, the board approved the first CIP plan back in 2020, where we were issued bonds for $20 million for our first year of CIP. The board graciously approved an additional $20 million from our fund balance in order to provide additional capital funds to begin a vehicle replacement plan, remodel the DOT crew building, public safety vehicles, fire apparatus, ambulance replacements, building repairs, roofs, purchased a new elections building, and matched for the airport taxiway grant. I could go on and on about the projects that this funding has allowed us to do over the past couple of years. As you will see, we received a request of $125,980,000 in capital request. As we had limited funding for FY 24, we, as a committee, we have a capital committee, we sat and we looked at the priorities that the board gave us, the departments gave us, and the available funding that we have. And we came up with a funding of 100, I'm sorry, $22,104,170. As you see here, we are going to give funds to the airport, buildings, DOT, the fire department, fleet replacement plan, the probate court, and sheriffs, and the tax technology, and a small amount for contingency, to give us $22,104,000 in our capital request. Our five-year capital plan, as you see, that we actually were able to meet since our last board meeting to go over the funding sources for our next five-year plan. As one year rolls off, we add a new year, so we'll come before you each year with a new plan. This plan includes a total of, overall, for five years, $289 million, which includes the public safety complex, the judicial complex, tax commissioner building, other facility repairs, and capital projects, and continue our vehicle replacement plan. The sources of revenue that we are looking for funding will be the 911 funds, the public facility authority, the impact fees, SPOSS six, and fund balance if needed. And I would like to ask for continued support of the capital improvement plan, and ask that you approve the five-year capital improvement plan. Do you have any questions?
Is Jody coming up to talk to? You've got something to present as well?
They were pointing at it.
Okay. Well, she talked a lot about fleet replacement plan, so.
Correct. We've got, we've got several requests here. And I am sure, we have went over, basically, these are requests from each department that we have evaluated, and it is replacing some definitely old stuff. Our basic policy is, you know, trucks, sedans are five-year, 100, 150,000 miles. Standard-use sedans, 10-year, 150,000 miles. Heavy trucks are 20-year. Heavy equipment, it gets real detailed a little bit when we start getting into heavy equipment, fire apparatus, and ambulances, because they are sometimes lower year, it doesn't matter, they can be extremely high usage and worn. So we've got a list of stuff to consider, and I think we're at the four million of that? Four, four point oh seven? Okay, I'm on the right.
Four point five.
Yeah. And everything here has been evaluated and looked at.
We've reviewed them.
Okay.
For vehicle.
Okay, I'm on the wrong line. But yeah, we've looked at everything. A lot of this stuff is going to be basic things you'll see on the road, the tractors, bat wing, mowing, some of ambulances, fire truck is in here, a couple apparatus, I believe, some tandem dump trucks, some stuff for construction.
Do you have a copy of the fleet replacement plan that can be shared with the board?
Madam Chair, I'll email it to the board members as we sit here. I'll get it sent out.
And we've also been doing, we've had auctions, we've replaced, sold about 100, 110 or 120 on this list, and we're going, coming to the board very soon for about 105. So a lot of vehicles that are very old have been taken out of service. So we're looking good out there right now.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Wilson, did you have any questions?
I do have a question. Last meeting, Angie, on the five-year, you presented a document where there was $69,000, $69 million in deficit on the, according to what I'm reading here.
Yes, sir, you're looking at the previous. You're looking at the previous presentation.
Yes, last meeting.
And we have updated that presentation to the attached that's in your packet. So we are actually balanced at this point.
Trying to figure out where the difference was.
Well, we made some changes even with the five-year plan from the previous meeting. We updated the funding, we added SPOS six as a funding source and we also added the public, the financing, public financing authority as well as a funding source.
So being the bonding, that comes through bonding, correct?
Yes, sir. But I will, if you have a question about that, I'll defer to county management.
Okay. I'm just trying to figure out where the difference was.
Yes.
Commissioner Anglin?
Do you have questions?
Do you have any questions, please? Jody, when you talk about your vehicle replacement plan, are you really just talking about really repair and maintenance when you rotate those cars out of system for purchasing? Or do you actually have a plan for integrating leasing into what cars can be leased, what cars must be purchased? Do you have a written plan for something of that nature?
We, basically, most of the lower cost units and the units that we know we're going to keep a while, we don't lease. Some of the fire apparatus is under a lease agreement and it's on like a seven-year roll. Some things make sense to lease. Some of our vehicles, DOT trucks and stuff, it is, we just use them and we use them for a long time and we basically do repair and maintain them to a, you know, higher mileage level. And we try to meet this, basically, an industry standard to swap them out when they're pretty well-used up. If you see our auction, a lot of the vehicles are, they've gotten their life out of them, so you guys have gotten a good deal, you know, got a lot of bang for your buck.
Well, I believe that we do. I know that you are getting as much as you can out of the vehicles. What I'm looking for is a written plan as to how this is done. So if we don't have a Jody standing in front of us, what do we do? What do we follow? So I want to make a request, Chair Horeo, that we get an update on the process, a written process of how this is supposed to work, the rotation process, when you rotate them in, when you rotate them out, what guidelines are you following as well? In addition to that recommendation of where we can do leases on vehicles and how that will affect our bottom line, will that help us save money, will it not help us save money? What is the smart thing to do? Because we're constantly buying vehicles. I know our sheriff department is waiting on vehicles. We've bought other vehicles for our police department, we've upgraded some fire engines and I have been asking probably about three years now, because I'm in my fifth year, about to say, where is that plan of what we're going to do? So I'm requesting a full-scale written plan that anybody can look at and say, this is what we're leasing, this is what we're saving by doing, this is what we're buying, this is what we're saving by doing, the process that we need to follow. But I believe with all that I have, that you're getting as much out of every vehicle that you can possibly get. I believe that. I just want some policies and procedures that are in place that we can make sure implemented consistently.
Okay. We have a.
May I make that request, Chair Horeo?
Yes. So county manager, can you just make sure that in the next 30 days that you all provide an update of what plan that you currently have in place? And I guess really kind of the pros and cons of what we purchase, what we lease and, you know, I mean, because I know some public safety equipment we cannot lease, we purchase, and I know some that we can lease. And so just share with the board in the next 30 days, Commissioner Thomas's request on a written plan. Is that something y'all can do?
Yes, ma'am. I've just sent it to you all, the policy and the plan, and what I will do is modify that to incorporate the lease/purchase option because we've had some conversations about it internally. So let me update what we have and I'll incorporate that piece in as requested.
So I have one question on the leasing option. I know a lot of times we are competing with people like Enterprise that do that lease option. They're competing for the same vehicles, we're competing for whether we leasing or purchasing them. Is that correct?
That's correct. We actually have had quite a few conversations with Enterprise Leasing about the possibility of leasing administrative-type vehicles. I know for our fire apparatus, leasing in some cases is not an option, but I do know where lease options have been available specifically for our ladder trucks, we have been able to use a lease option. The challenge that we have when we're working with companies like Enterprise or any other leasing company, they aren't able to get vehicles any faster than we're able to get those vehicles. And so timing is critical for us. But we have had some conversations, we'll circle back and look at a comparison in terms of what the cost would be for us. But I think what Mr. Schwartz has right now is, as the fleet director, what triggers us having to replace those vehicles? Because I think it's twofold. It's the replacement piece and it's the expense piece. What I think I'm hearing from Commissioner Thomas is that she wants us to look at a policy on the expense piece and less on how many miles are on the vehicle or how that vehicle's being replaced in terms of the wear and tear of the vehicle. But we can certainly revisit it and then I'll bring back a recommendation to the board for vehicle purchases.
But I think all that has to be incorporated, the mileage and the wear and tear on vehicles when you are generating this plan.
Absolutely. And I think the lease/purchase option is going to be more applicable to those that are in administrative-type vehicles. I'm not sure that it will work for our police department because of the mileage and the wear and tear that they're putting on a vehicle, but for a staffer who is assigned to take-home vehicle, then that may be a doable option. The other thing that we're also looking at is electric vehicles and that has been something that we've had some conversations about in terms of who would be most suited for that type of vehicle and how we can incorporate charging stations in some of our developments or at least our new developments that are going forward. So we are looking at every option out there in terms of making sure that we are saving monies, but also making sure that we're planning for it. Commissioner Thomas is right, we have done quite a few vehicle purchases, but this is what has been the result because we haven't had a vehicle replacement plan and so we had a number of vehicles that needed to be replaced at the same time. So while it looks like a lot, hopefully this will get us on par and then moving forward, we'll know every year what that dollar amount needs to be when we come to the board in terms of budgeting for those vehicles that need to be replaced.
Correct. And I know public safety has gone a long time without vehicles. So. Commissioner Thomas?
Thank you very much. She said exactly what I would like to have done because I am very confident that the department is doing their very best to stretch the life out of every car that we have and I know you guys are doing a great job in keeping them well serviced. So thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Thomas, I think you have some.
I have some additional questions and I think it may go back to Bernita. Bernita, I've looked at your, I should say the budget, not your budget, but the overall budget and I've had an extensive conversation with David and with our chair as well about some things. And I noticed that in this particular budget, every department, basically a cluster, were denied personnel, new personnel going forward. And David gave me a great understanding as to why that is so. But I wanted to know if you could do something else or work on something or the county manager may have to sign this to someone. So I'm addressing you, but it may be real signed to somebody else, okay? We have at least 200 positions that are considered not, that are vacant at this point in time and we're carrying that figure on our books right now and it's a heavy figure. I wanted to know if we can have a process created for reclassifications of positions to make sure if indeed I have positions in my department, maybe 10 of them, that I can get, sign a form or make a request digitally, not on paper, to have that position reclassified or combined, to fill a position that I'm in need of now. So that's one of the requests I would like to have done on that form. The next is also state on there the impact it would cause to my department, be it positive or negative, for that reclassification or to have it done at a particular time, of course justifying the reason for it. In addition to that, a managerial area where administration has the right to transfer in, transfer around, reclassify positions that are writing our books or staying in our books for an extended period of time, whereas there may be another cluster in need of people, instead of adjusting our budget, we can simply move these funds from one cluster to the next. And management should have the ability to do that without a cluster leader's request, but management should be able to do that. So I'm asking for all these different people who have requested new positions to basically relook at their in-house positions, where there are openings to reclassify and send in a request to management, to human resources to have this done and reclassified so we can start filling some other positions. And get a report back to us by quarterly, quarterly report on the impact of that to see if we can stop having 200, 300 or 400 positions available because we have looked back at our needs. And it could very well be that some of those positions need to be classified as consultants. Instead of trying to fill a position, we need to make the request for it to be a consultant. And I wanted to ask if that can be done to help fill some of these vacancies or fill some of the new requests that's on our budget for this year. And there again, county manager, I directed it to Bernita. I'm not sure you would direct to make that happen, but if we can have that within 60 days, that would be great.
So Commissioner, tell me exactly what you would like to receive in 60 days?
You want me to repeat it all?
No, no, no.
Short version of it is, the positions that we have on the book.
Okay.
Have the cluster leaders or directors to look at those positions, to see if any of those positions need to be reclassified. And if so, it may give us an opportunity to fill some positions that were requested that we were unable to fill at this present time. I just want to make sure that any reclassifications or any change in positions come, that once that department or cluster leader decides that they need to, and I guess just the basic way that I can explain it, you know, say in DOT, if you have six laborer positions and you might need three equipment operators, maybe some of those positions can be reclassified to equipment operator as opposed to laborer. So just basically, I know year to year, department needs change. And so just to have positions on the book, and I know a lot of positions we can't fill because of what the current salary is of those positions. So hopefully, once we fund the class and comp, then, you know, maybe that will help us in filling some of the positions as well. But to just basically look at all the positions in all of those departments and, you know, then they get back with you with regards to what their true needs are.
And I will make myself available to more clarification because it could very well be that you have to combine two positions to create one position to get it at the salary that you needed at to fill that position. But we do need to go through reclassifications and that reclassification should come off a job description to make sure we're meeting the needs, the immediate needs of that area of that cluster. That's the goal. This will not affect our bottom line here. I'm not adding any money to what we have. I'm asking us to maximize some money that we have on hold now for those outstanding positions.
Okay.
Okay.
So I'm going to provide to you all a list of the vacancies that we have and follow-up with the respective departments to see if there is the ability to reclassify those positions. That's, okay, yes, okay, I'm clear now. We currently do that with our positions, so I just need to know how to create what reports you're looking for so I can make sure I give you the right information. But I'm clear.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. And the last thing I wanted to ask to have done is, when it comes down to our class and comp study, there were a number of questions not answered when the representative was here. She simply did not have the information we need. I do not feel that the class and comp study was done as best as it could have been done and I would like to see us have the time to redo whatever's necessary to make sure those numbers are correct by class, by job description, by whatever, whatever means that we're going to do it so that it will be correct, number one. And second of all, ma'am chair, I would like to see this board keep the $10.3 million in the budget as it is, but place it on hold or set it aside not to be used until we get a corrected plan back before us. So we all know exactly what the true numbers are and how those, and a presentation of what you all would like to see, how those dollars should be distributed. We're looking to make sure that our people who are laborers at the bottom level are taken care of just as well as our other people in administrative levels. Because we have had some people very concerned that we moved them, but we only moved them to a different tax status. They really did not realize the increase because the increase did not help them at that point in time. It simply moved them just enough not to realize it at home. We don't want that to happen this time. And I think by keeping the dollar figures in the budget, but having it placed on a set aside or a hold until we're able to verify that this report is correct, because I do not feel that the report is correct, and then determine how best to implement those dollars that we have available.
That's something that we can do. County manager?
Yes, ma'am. That was on the agenda, but thank you, Commissioner Thomas. I think you've given my update, so I appreciate it. I will make sure that I'll follow up with the board. I'll add some additional comments because I knew, I know that staff is very concerned about the class and compensation and I want to publicly at least say to the board what the intent of the class and compensation study was. Thank you, Commissioner, for that support in terms of leaving the funding there because we will need the funding, but I do know that I will have to bring that plan back before the board for your final approval. And so those funds will not be expended until I do receive final approval from the Board of Commissioners. So thank you.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yeah, I was going back to the vehicle replacement. But that's okay.
Jody, where you at?
So I'd like to know how we're going to replace all the vehicles we've purchased in the last couple of years. I mean, we bought several hundred PD cars, correct?
Correct.
And we bought several fire trucks and ladder trucks. So how are we going to replace those as we need instead of buying that volume of vehicles? So what's that plan look like? Instead of buying 200, are we going to buy 25 a year to kind of keep the roll those out? I'm not sure.
Yes, we could. What happened here is again, we went many years without it. Our fleet is around 1,300 and some pieces of equipment and some get used more than often. Police, of course, sheriff and fire are literally running up the clock on vehicles. When we get them, it's kind of like anything, you get everything at once and everybody's using it. We can definitely put in a phase-in thing and the some that we can take out, we would use as pool car and try to make that cycle work a little better. But I mean, to get zero cars for, you know, five years makes the exact thing happen that just happened. I mean, we can't.
And I know all that was handed to us, we didn't really have a choice but to do that, but I'd like to see something in place that like every July, let's look at maybe ordering 25 patrol cars, maybe two fire trucks and two ambulances and have a plan to how that's going to look like every July 1st. Instead of all this hitting us at one time. Instead of all this hitting us at one time, we ordered five fire trucks, 200 police cars again.
Yeah.
So try to... try to phase it in that way. That wouldn't be so costly.
That's definitely possible. It's just, we just received the five vans from '21. They just got here in February. And so sometimes cycling right now is really hard to figure out how to do. Because, you know, it's a three-year order span. Some of the fire trucks, of course, two years.
I know the availability is going to be tough. At least if we had a plan in place that we can implement when the availability is there.
Yeah. We could definitely order on time and we can expect, you know, when we...
And we won't need them for a couple more years, but at least we have a plan in place of how we're going to replace them.
Yeah. I completely agree with that.
All right. Thank you.
Conversation is we have to be able to fund it. You know, it's... Jody may come and say, hey, look, we need to replace 50 pursuit vehicles. But based on our revenues, based on where we are, we've got to make sure that we have that funding source. And I think that was one of the questions you asked in terms of when we initially brought forth that capital project list. What I heard from commissioners is, look, I don't want to approve a plan that does not have an identified funding source. How are we going to pay for it? So that's one of the things that we will have to continue working through. But your point is well taken in that we did have to buy a lot of vehicles at one time. The great thing about what Jody has in place is he has a grading system that assesses points. And so while we may have a vehicle that has a lot of mileage, we may be able to rotate that to a department like the building department. I know the commissioners have needs. And so we may have to rotate it to you all versus buying new vehicles for the administrative staff. But the funding is always, always going to be critical. And that's why it's important to identify all of the funding sources, but to also give you all an idea on what we want to spend. I think it's also important for the board to tell us we want to allocate this dollar amount per year on vehicle replacement. And if I tell Jody, you have $5 million, that's what Jody has. And he has to go out and determine, you know, what are our priorities with the parameters that we have before us. So I think in addition to having a plan, you've got to be able to fund that plan. And that's... that has been very challenging because we've had so many needs all at the same time.
Thank you.
I appreciate your support and help.
Thank you. Did you?
Benita, they leave us in miscellaneous money to beg for. I didn't see that on the sheet. Benita, where is that?
We don't have any.
No miscellaneous money. I'm sorry.
Nope. No miscellaneous.
Okay.
Okay. So this is a public hearing. And Stephanie, you have some individuals that have signed up to speak. They will have three minutes each. And if you could call them... Call them up.
We do. We have 10 individuals. And the first individual is Kathy Palatsky.
Good evening. Library system in Henry County is approaching a crisis point. At the beginning of this year's budget process, I cautioned that unless we can attract and retain qualified employees, role enclosures in FY '24 are a near certainty. We've had over 35% staff turnover in the past 12 months. And nearly every person who has resigned has cited low pay as the sole reason. All of our branches have multiple vacancies, and my prediction has already come true as we closed one library on Saturday due to a lack of enough space, enough staff, to safely provide service. Library funding is simple. The BOC appoints the Library Board of Trustees and allocates tax revenue, which is paid, used to pay hourly staff. All library employees are employed by the Library Board, which functions as a pass-through agency for BOC allocated funds. No library staff are state employees. The Library Board is fully accountable for these funds as our finances are audited as a component unit of the county in the annual audit by Malden and Jenkins. There are no state, federal, or private grant funds that can be used to pay hourly staff. But because library staff are not direct county employees, they have been excluded from raises provided to county staff in recent years. My request to have library positions included in the classification and compensation study were declined. Entry-level positions at the libraries start at $12 an hour and require at least an associate's degree or equivalent. New hires with a master's degree start at $16 an hour. For comparison, the McDonald's right next door to our headquarters library is starting teenagers at $17 an hour plus tuition reimbursement. The BOC has not allocated funds for library staff raises in at least six years on the premise that library employees are not county staff. The vast majority of library staff live in Henry County. They all work here, spend money here, and pay taxes here. They are part of the community and part of the economy. In addition, Henry County residents deserve quality library service that can only be provided by stable, professional staff. Library work is a profession, not a hobby. Lacking funds from the BOC for staff raises in FY '24, I'm expecting another wave of resignations that will further destabilize library staffing. Library workers are trained professionals who deserve a living wage instead of being kept at near-poverty level wages on a technicality. When I became the library director in 2018, I made an ongoing commitment to identify and remove barriers to library service. Currently, the most significant barrier is deeply ingrained and demonstrably false misinformation about library funding. I want to be clear that this misinformation predates anyone currently on the Library Board of Commissioners. You inherited that information. I don't believe that the library funding issues are the result of malice or of intent, but of pervasive misinformation and confusion about the county's responsibility to fund public libraries. The good news is, this can be fixed. Please don't ask me to tell my staff maybe next year for the sixth year in a row. I respectfully request that you revisit library funding for FY '24 and that you commit individually and as a board to address and dismantle the assumptions and misinformation that are crippling library service in Henry County. Thank you for your time.
Gina Riffey?
Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to address you about this issue with the library funding. Libraries are centers of learning, of lifelong learning, and they're also very egalitarian. All you need, if you live in Henry County, is to get a library card. And you can get all sorts of help from the librarians. They're wonderful about helping people with low computer skills. Lots of times, people don't have computers at homes. And if they want to apply for a job, they have to go to the library and apply for that job. And unfortunately, the hours have been cut at the libraries. So I moved here in 1975. And one of the big reasons I bought my house in Henry County was that I was two doors down from the library. And that's been such an important part of my life. And it broke my heart when they built a new headquarters library and I had to actually get in my car to go drive to the library. But I'm willing to do that. But I think it's so important that we fund the library and that we give people a living wage. You know, it's... The turnover has been so bad for the library system. And I know you guys have serious decisions you have to make about funding. But I think the libraries are such an important part of our lives, starting with the programs they have for children, all the way up through... Well, I'm 76 at this point, but they still have programs available even for me. So I want you to do what... work what kind of magic you need to do in order to try to provide at least an increase in salary for our hourly employees at the library. And thank you very much for the opportunity to address you about this matter.
Cecilia Vendetti?
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I think it's important for us to get raises for Henry County library system and to be able to make a living wage because we're all very passionate about the library in Henry County and want to be able to do our best to help the community as much as we can. But we're always like having a high turnover rate because we're losing staff due to low wages. And I think it's important for Henry County library system to get the living wages to be able to be able to help the community as much as we can. And as like, all of us have like different situations. Some of us are mothers, have children, are single women, trying to strive to make it and do what we can to fulfill our passion for the library as well as to make a living as well. And it would be great if, if possible, we could be able to have the living wages and raises for our jobs here at the library. Thank you for your time.
Leslie Wantlin?
Good evening. My name is Leslie Wantlin. Please forgive me. This is a very emotional topic for me, very emotional. I am the BOE representative for the Henry County Library System Board of Trustees. For 32 years, I have worked for the Henry County Board of Education. And every day of this 32 years, I remind myself that society often judges a community on how it treats its children. So please keep that in mind this evening. When the Director of HCLS submitted the budget request earlier this year, she emphasized the need for the increased funding to adjust the pay scale to hourly employees. As of now, the budget for FY 2024 does not reflect that increase. To meet the needs of our community, especially our children who come from economically disadvantaged backgrounds, our most pressing need is to stabilize the workforce for the library. As stated a moment ago, the staff turnover for the past 12 months has been 35%, and this creates a huge inefficiency in terms of both real cost and staff time to interview, hire, and train new staff, with current pay starting only for a new hourly wage from $12 to $16 an hour. Low wages for library staff have created a constant cycle of resignations, advertising positions, evaluating applications, interviewing candidates, training and onboarding new hires, and then having to start a round of another process of doing this all over again because of the resignations. Every step in this process has a time cost and a dollar cost. This is a burden at many levels of the organization, and it means that even the funds we do receive from the BOC are not being used efficiently. This also means that we may not have adequate staff to meet the needs of our quickly growing population of Henry County, especially our children. The Henry County library system has received numerous grants to help with such projects ranging from summer reading to the million-dollar renovation, much-needed renovation of the McDonough branch. This has saved the BOC a great amount of money. The library director has a proven track record of grant writing and regularly secures all grants for which library system is eligible. None of these funds can be used to pay an hourly staff. In addition, the grants are not cure-all's. We recently had to decline a grant we were awarded because the person who wrote the grant resigned and we simply didn't have the manpower to implement the grant with that vacant position. I respectfully request that you reconsider and include hourly library employees in the classification and compensation study. Please reconsider the budget and provide the funds to improve the pay scale to hourly employees. Thus, you will help the children in our growing community who heavily rely on the library for their education and pleasure reading needs, especially when school is not in session. Please don't let a child go to the library summer for summer reading and find the door locked because there wasn't enough employees to safely staff the building. Thank you for your time.
Amanda Pope?
Dear Commissioners, my name is Amanda, and I'm the Young Adult Specialist at the McDonough Public Library. I'm speaking on behalf of a few of the Henry County Library System staff members that were unable to make the meeting tonight. We would like to share information with you on how the absence of raises affect our lives. Here's my story. I live in a modest 670-square-foot apartment in McDonough with my husband. Without his income, after paying rent, I would only have $444 left for the rest of my monthly expenses. This means that 78% of my monthly wages go to pay rent. This doesn't include my electric bill, car payment, renters and car insurance, groceries, subscriptions, gas, and other surprise expenses like doctor bills or car repairs. Here's a story from a library assistant. As a graduate student who works part-time, remaining in this position has undoubtedly placed a strain on my finances. While I would love to gain seniority and experience within HCLS as the years go by, I would not be able to realistically remain in my current position without any additional pay. From the invaluable experiences that I have gained working at the library, I've seen the impact that the public library has on the wider community. I have assisted with job applications, resume editing, tax forms, and technological assistance that patrons were assured that could be handled at their local library. As we expand to offer wider access to notary services, passport applications, and countless other vital services, I believe that the way to strengthen the quality of what we offer to Henry County is to ensure that we retain satisfied staff who are proud of what they do and have the financial stability to continue for working for their community. Here's Mindy's story. An hourly manager with 25 years of experience living in one of the cheapest two-bedroom apartments in McDonough spends 55% of her take-home pay on rent. A single parent can't afford basic needs on the hourly pay that the library provides. We cannot currently retain staff, and that has a ripple effect. Morale is low, staff are overworked, and we are continually in the hiring process and training staff. It takes approximately six months for a new staff member to be comfortable and knowledgeable enough to answer patron questions independently. Longevity is important to be able to offer quality programs and customer service. It is vital to increase pay to a level to where we can compete with entry-level jobs, such as places as Target, who are known for starting pay at $15 an hour for high school graduates. It is clear that you value education and you are contributing to a much-needed pay increase for teachers and bus drivers. Libraries are an extension of the education system and a cornerstone of our community. Show county residents and library staff that you value and take pride in the library system that serves Henry County and approve the $2 an hour pay increase we desperately need and deserve. Thank you.
Roy Farad? Anne Franklin?
Good evening. My name is Anne Franklin. I'm a member of the Henry County Library Systems Board of Trustees, and I represent the 3rd District here in the county. A few years after I retired from teaching, I worked at the McDonough Library for one year back in 2007. I earned $9.50 an hour. By 2017, 10 years later, library employees' hourly rate had increased to $12 an hour, but there had been no raises in the past six years. The current starting rate for non-management library positions ranges from $12 to $16 an hour, depending on their level of education. In comparison, the Henry County website lists positions requiring no more than a high school diploma or a GED that begin at 12 to... excuse me, $15 to $20 an hour. Meanwhile, we have been unable to fill many vacant positions at our libraries throughout the county because of low wages. This year, the Board of Commissioners is set to adopt a classification and compensation study, which would include wage increases for all county employees. study, which would include wage increases for all county employees. The Board of Commissioners has provided no funds for the library staff raises in over six years, with the reasoning being that they won't provide raises for non-county employees. This is despite the fact that every dollar currently paid to those hourly library employees comes directly from the Board of Commissioners. The renovation of the McDonough Library is scheduled to begin this fall, and we're facing a very real possibility of rolling closures for fiscal year twenty-four due to being short-staffed. To reduce services in a year when such a high-profile project is underway gives a bad impression to the public. We will likely have a beautifully renovated space with limited public access because we cannot retain enough staff to operate safely. Please reconsider and raise the hourly rate for all library employees so that it is commensurate with the raise for all county employees. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Amanda Mays Chester.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board of Commissioners. My name is Amanda Mays Chester. I'm a librarian and the assistant manager at the McDonough Public Library, which is the headquarters branch of the Henry County Library System. And I'm here tonight to tell the Board of Commissioners that after six years, our staff deserve raises. Taken straight from his campaign website, our District Three Commissioner Anglin publicly states that the reason he ran for Commissioner was to protect our quality of life in Henry County. Additionally, in his capacity as financial advisor, Commissioner Anglin publicly states that he values, quote, "planning for retirement, saving for college for children or grandchildren, or just trying to protect the financial future of the ones you care for most," unquote. Tonight, I ask, how can single parents on staff save for their kids or protect their financial futures when annual inflation is paired with no raise in pay from the Board of Commissioners? Our quality of life is affected by the low pay we receive. As Commissioner Anglin states on the Henry County Board of Commissioners' website, he is, quote, "excited for the opportunity to work hard for the community that has meant so much for him and his family," unquote. Since the library is the hub of the community, should its staff not, excuse me, should its staff not be paid a living wage? As one colleague states, "With a living wage, I'd have to make nineteen dollars an hour to not live in poverty. My paycheck doesn't even cover rent." Because of low pay, our staff's children are on Peach Care, and the cost of their kids' school programs has to go on a credit card. As one staff member states, "What am I going to say to my daughter? You can't go because I can't afford it?" Our employees love their jobs and are worth being paid a living wage with the work that we do. As public servants, we take on every part of the community you can think of. Not only do we handle daily struggles of our patrons, we go above and beyond to teach kids to love reading, help teens navigate transitions from high school to college, and provide adults with literacy skills that are critical to getting jobs. What would Henry County be without the library? It is clear that without giving staff raises, the Board of Commissioners is saying they are okay with their employees living in poverty. But how can this be okay when the Commissioner of our own District Three has said that he ran for his position to protect our quality of life? In closing, we are confident that the Board of Commissioners will do the right thing and practice the ethics they stand for by providing raises for library employees. Thank you for your time.
Jamie Barnas.
My name is Jamie Barnas. I worked the Henry County Library System as the Young Adult Specialist at our Cochrane Branch. And I want to put a couple of things into perspective by sharing my story. I've started at the Cochrane Branch making fifteen dollars an hour. A hundred percent of my income goes to rent and my car payment. My husband works two jobs to handle the rest. I'm sorry. And while I can see in the counties surrounding us similar rates of growth and opportunity, as highlighted by our budget presentations that we saw earlier this evening, my pay remains stagnant. So I'm asking myself the question, and I'm sure a lot of my other colleagues are asking themselves the question, why stay? But there's a laundry list, growing laundry list, of reasons why we stay in our positions. We're passionate about our jobs. I work hard every day to ensure the patrons in our library can find enjoyment, education, and entertainment, and critical skills in books, internet access, digital services, and community space, along with an agenda of programs that educate and inspire them. But we're all rapidly entering a point in which we can no longer justify a stagnant pay scale while watching the prices of what we need to live go up. Just this year alone, I have paid multiple expenses out of pocket to accommodate personal medical needs, ranging from chronic migraines to, you know, I don't want to go into that. But I love my job. I love it so much. I don't think anybody more joyfully collects cardboard for library programs and crafting like I do. And I, so I want to stay here, and I want to fight for, me and my colleagues', right to live in this county. Thank you so much for hearing from us, and I hope you find it in your hearts to level the playing field for us. Thank you.
The last speaker is Andra White.
Hello, my name is Andra White. I've been a member of the library system for over fifteen years. I want to first start by saying thank you to all the librarians, with specially, special thanks to Henry County. I live, I live near two other librarians, but I go to, but I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm just emotional right now just hearing this. I live near two libraries, but I go out of my way to visit Fairview Library because that staff is professional, kind, knowledgeable, and caring. They actually care about me as a person and not just as a patron of the library. Not only do I have a person account, personal account of their kindness, but I have witnessed their kindness toward other members of the library. It saddens me that the monetary compensation of their librarians poor poorly reflects the tremendous value that they bring to the community. These humble librarians still goes above and beyond to carry out their responsibility, even though they are currently receiving poor wages. Librarians are instrumental in making such, in making sure there is technology equality and accessibility resource within the community. Therefore, I think you should consider giving these more-than-deserving librarian an increase in pay and show that they are worthy. And furthermore, to show your community to the intellectual and economically advanced of the community. Thank you for your time.
Is that it?
That's all.
Okay, great, thank you.
Roy Farad didn't sign up, but he didn't come forward when I called, but he is available. Can he come forward to speak?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Roy Farad, he was, he signed up to speak, he just wasn't here when his name was called. Can he come up now and speak?
Sure, absolutely.
How are you doing, Council? Can I submit this to the county? Do we have something that we'd like to submit to the county and to each one of you? Do I bring it to you or just give it to them?
No, you give it to the county clerk, and she can bring it up.
How are you doing? I'm Roy Farad. I've been going to this library for years. I appreciate the library, I appreciate you. But the library is the foundation of the culture that we deserve. Jacques Buzon said that, and it's still true today. It's the key of enlightenment, and the keys are the staff, the authors in the book, and the facility itself. Those little things are important. And the patrons that come there appreciate this library because of what it gives. Every great society had a great library. Alexandria in Egypt, Timbuktu in Africa, and in Spain, Toledo and Cordova. I know those personally because my people were Sephardic Jews. When my family came to America, and we came here, the foundation of our education was the library system, and it was important to who we were. So when I look at this, it holds the key to the community. It has to be funded. It's the key of knowledge workers. Peter Drucker says, "A library worker is a knowledge worker." We no longer live in the industrial age, and until they're addressed as that, we can't go on. We can no longer deal in bit technology. You get holistic technology in a library. You have to read the book. You just can't read a little bit and take that as a false truth. Whereas when you sit back and you look at it, where would we be without the library? So when you say, "We feel safe there," it gives us the resources to all backgrounds and people. It's essential to our community, it's a statewide place where all people come from, and it brings people to you. And then you look at, you're going to pay these people, these knowledge workers in this society, so little for they give so much. Right now, we're suffering from stagflation that we haven't suffered from since the seventies. Inflation is the basement of capital. It's a hidden tax. I've been an economist and an engineer for years, and I know this, and everybody should be aware of it because why? It's written in all the books in the library. You go in there, it's true. This is stagflation. Inflation is the basement of capital. Government knows it. And you wonderful people will help these people because you will do the morally correct thing. I appreciate you having me here. Have a good day.
So I'd like to call for a motion to approve the FY 2024 budget.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the FY 2024 budget with the noted, highlighted things in reference to, I guess I should say what they are.
Class and comp.
Class and comp study, reclassification, and the vehicle replacement plan be added to the budget as described in this meeting.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Questions?
She adding to the budget?
She was adding that the class and comp study, yeah, okay, all right. Got a motion and a second. No other questions or discussions? All in favor? Motion carries. Human Resources update on the Henry County Employee Class and Comp Plan.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. As I indicated earlier, Commissioner Thomas did highlight a number of the concerns regarding our class and compensation study. If the board will recall, in August of last year, the board did authorize staff to solicit proposals, and we did retain a firm to look at classifications for our county employees. The one thing that I think is most critical is that the class and comp plan is not an across-the-board raise, and I think there is some misconception that that's what we were looking to do. What we're focusing on specifically is making sure that we are providing equitable pay to our employees. And as part of the class and comp, one of the things that we really, really push with our consultant is making sure that those hard-to-fill positions, our laborers, our DOT, our paramedics, and I don't want to miss anyone, but those positions that we've had trouble filling, that they really, really take a hard look at those positions, and to come back with a recommendation that either gets us to the market level or in some cases exceeds the market level. Based on the presentation that was presented to our board a couple of meetings back, there were a lot of concerns that I had in terms of the initial recommendations, specifically not addressing those hard-to-fill positions, and specifically, again, those positions that are our current workforce. And so we're looking at not only retaining a qualified workforce, but also recruiting a qualified workforce, which is why it has not been brought back to the board. What I've asked our staff to do is to take every position that has been identified, look at how we compare not only to our surrounding jurisdictions, but also to the private sector, because I think you've heard from a number of employees that it is very challenging in terms of being able to raise families and then being able to stay here in our community and work. I did commit to bringing back to this board a plan, but it is not a plan that I currently feel comfortable bringing back to the board, because the plan as currently written does not give a clear understanding on the methodology and how we got to where we are. There is a lot of focus on years of service with the county and not really focusing on the job classification. And so we're looking to take a step back, revisit the plan, making sure that we've captured some of the comments that I've heard from a number of the commissioners, specifically Commissioner Thomas, I do agree with you. We want to make sure that it is not a plan that's not equitable, but it also is a plan that we can live with. The other part is that the plan should also have included supplemental pay for those hard-to-fill positions where you may be working in an area that requires some form of a certification or a specialty. And so those are things that we recognize had not been included in the plan that we'd like to include. I will say to the board that there has been a number of requests for information for the plan. I want the public to know, I want the board to know that we will release that information. But I think it's also important for everyone to know that the consultant team is a recommending body, and that the Board of Commissioners has the final say on what our final pay classifications will be. And so I will ask this board to give us a little more time to navigate through the recommendations, but also to make sure that those positions that we know that we have been challenged with, that they are competitive. The plan as currently drafted does not give us that. And so we have had several conversations with our consultant team, and obviously, they do have concerns in terms of just changing recommendations, because they want to make sure that whatever those changes are, that they can support what those changes are. So our department heads, our cluster leaders, our leadership team has really gone back and pulled from areas that we are competing with. It's not just counties. We're competing with individuals that work at McDonald's, we're competing with individuals that work at Buc-E's, we're competing with we're competing with individuals that work at Buc-Ee's, we're competing with everyone. And so we want to make sure that we do have a competitive pay plan, but also a plan that we can afford. The current budget does allocate funding, but I do know that there has been some concerns with that amount. And so as I've mentioned in my initial comments, we will bring back to the board a final plan that you all will approve, and that will set the pay structure for how we move forward. I will also say to this board that every two years, we should be updating that plan. And we need to update the plan so that we can remain competitive. And so that's one thing, I know that the previous plan, it's been about four and a half or five years, and so we are due for that update. But I also want you all to know that I am remaining committed to making sure that this plan happens. It is a big deal, it is something that this board has challenged me and our team to do, and that is a priority to make sure that this class and compensation plan is completed or a recommendation is made to this board in terms of what we do to move forward. So at this time, I'll pause for any questions or comments that the board may have, but I wanted you all to know that it is not forgotten. We are working on it every single day, our HR team is working on it, and we are trying to make sure that we do have a plan that we can not only explain, but a plan that clearly represents what I believe the board charged us with. And that was making sure that we're able to not only recruit, but to retain our current workforce. So at this time, I'll pause for any comments that the board may have.
So Sheri, the one thing is, can we get a commitment that this is, as you guys continue to work through this plan, that is something that will be brought back to the board so that it can be implemented by July 1?
Absolutely. I can definitely bring back to this board a plan. Obviously, if you all approve it at the next board meeting, which gives me about two weeks, I don't know if I can commit to the first meeting in June, but I can definitely do the second meeting in June.
Yeah, I'm thinking the second meeting in June, if you could bring it back. I think that if any commissioners have any concerns or continued questions that between now and our second board meeting, that they should get with you and whomever else they need to speak to with regards to, you know, getting their questions answered. Okay. Commissioner Wilson, it's you.
Questions, it's time to move.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next item on the agenda, planning and zoning, RZ 22-12.
Good evening, Chair, Board members, and citizens of Henry County. The rezoning request in front of you is for property located at 235 Springdale Road and East Lake Highway. The property is currently zoned RA Residential Agricultural, and the applicant is requesting a rezoning to C1 for a commercial retail development. The subject property is highlighted in green on all of the maps and is surrounded by RA, RS, and C2 properties. The future land use map is classifying the property as mixed use. The applicant is requesting a rezoning of 7.733 plus or minus acres from RA Residential Agricultural to C1 Neighborhood Commercial for a commercial retail complex, which shall include a gas station and convenience store, retail space, and quick-service restaurants. The future land use map designates the subject property as mixed use and supports the rezoning request. This request is also supported by Section 4.03.09 of the ULDC, which specifies supplemental standards for gasoline service stations. The subject property is within the boundaries of the Highway Corridor Overlay District, and the development will be required to comply with development standards. The site plan shown has the gas pumps behind the convenience store, so this is a convenience store here, a 14-foot multi-use path along the frontage of the property, and rooftop dining aspect. So here what the buildings look like. This is the main convenience store. And here's the building with the rooftop dining aspect. The development can gain water access through all-site sanitary sewer line extension, and they are required to do a traffic impact study through the Department of Transportation, which will offer traffic mitigation suggestions. Staff notes that applicant's request for commercial rezoning is consistent with the character of the area, which is planned to be developed for mixed use as per the future land use map. Staff recommends approval of the applicant's request with the seven conditions in this presentation. These conditions include a master sign plan requirement and prohibited uses. And I'll be happy to take any questions. Oh, and this is not a public hearing, by the way.
Okay. Commissioner Thomas, I know this is in your area.
Would you go back to layout, please, come on. And I want to give him such high praise because he has worked diligently with me and I can be a little testing, and the developer, I said that fast enough, to find a product that we can present to this board that I believe that's acceptable and that will be a new standard for bringing this type of development to Henry County. If you notice, we have rooftop restaurants with two standalone buildings, we have bike parking, we've doubled the greenery, we have the commercial space with parking down the center of it. We have not 10 feet sidewalk, are they 14 or 15?
14.
14 feet sidewalks going around the perimeter. We have a drive-through on the left-hand side of the screen with double greenery as well. There are gas pumps in the back that you can barely see, you will not see them. So all that grease and crud and stuff you normally see when you go to something similar to this, it will not be there. In the back, we are also having where attorneys, doctors' offices, and dental offices can be as well, and other retail boutique shops, but none of those lists that you saw formerly up there, it would not be inundated like that with rooftop restaurants as well. So it will have an underground retention pond, not a top side, so no hole at all, with a walking trail in the back as well. I will say that we pushed this developer, we pushed this developer, and he was willing to come to the table to make the investment for Henry County. So you will not see that retention pond. We've tried to make this as a model as how we need to go forward in Henry County to have high-profile developments in our community. So I think commissioners, you're welcome to look at and ask, come on, questions. I still have to give him so much praise for working with us, the planning that he did with us, the back entries as well are absolutely phenomenal. I think we'll all be pleased, there would be none of those cluster signs in the windows that we like to see, zero. We'll let him have an electronic billboard and sign there as well. We have tried to find every trick of the trade to make sure this is a high-profile, high-profile development in this area to keep it consistent with District 4. And if you go to the buildings, please, they were all modern buildings, all of them are. The restaurants are phenomenal, it's a place where you can go and sit and have a time with your family or invite friends to come as well. It will look very similar to what we put into our Publix, that type of work, that's the type of craftsmanship we tried to model this after. So I want to make a, I'm sorry, I was talking so much. I'd like to make a motion, if there are any questions, we'd be glad to answer, but I'd like to make a motion for approval.
You had a question, Commissioner Angler?
I just have one question. If you can go back to the site plan, only one concern, when you look here at the gas stations, which I love, by the way, with the pumps being behind there, you've only got one way in, one way out. Would you not want to notch out over there because that's your highest traffic area? All the other ones have multiple access points, this one does not.
So this is a conceptual plan, this still has to go through development review, and DOT, SPOS, they look at those things to make sure they have the right access, as well as the fire department. So it may not be shown exactly on this plan, but any adjustments or advancements that need to be made, staff takes care of those.
That was my only question.
Thank you.
My second motion.
Okay, got a motion and a second, no further discussion, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is RZ 22-23. Kenta?
Good evening, Chair, Board members, and citizens of Henry County. The item before you is for property located on Mosley Road and is currently zoned RA Residential Agricultural. This is the aerial shown on the exhibit maps in your books, as well as on the overhead projection. The future land use map designation for this subject property is low-density residential, which would allow for up to two dwelling units per, rather, support, up to two dwelling units per net acre. Here is the conceptual site plan that was submitted by the applicant. The plan indicates three lots meeting the standards of the R2 zoning district on septic. Speaking plainly, this would just be a simple lot division. The applicant is proposing, is requesting to rezone the property from RA to R2, single-family residence for that single-family residential lots. The three lots proposed would equal a density of 1.1 dwelling units per acre net. Again, they would be served by individual septic systems as proposed. On February 9th, 2023, the zoning advisory board did recommend approval of the applicant's request to rezone from RA to R2, single-family residence with conditions. Since that zoning advisory board meeting, staff has revised the recommended conditions. That final list is in your exhibit books, as well as shown on the overhead screen. I would like to mention that we have had, we have heard a few concerns regarding potential owners of these lots backing out onto Mosley Drive, I'm sorry, Mosley Road, and potentially leading to a car collision due to that curve in the road. To address this concern, we did include some language in Condition 8, that last sentence, "All driveways shall be turned around or circular driveways." We hope that'll be, that was in direct response to some of those concerns that we heard. That is all, thank you so much, and I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Can you go back to the first, to the beginning of the conditions? And then the next page, I'm sorry. Okay, and then the last one. Commissioner Thomas, this is in your district.
Kenta, we're talking about three units only, correct?
That is correct.
And they are average of 1,800 square feet, correct?
The minimum home size in the R2 zoning district is 1,600 square feet.
Okay.
As proposed, however, they are, I'm sorry, that is, yes, you, I'm sorry, you asked about lot size, did you know it?
I did, the house size.
House size, okay, house size is 1,600 square feet. Development standards as per our code, however, our Condition 2 requires a minimum of 1,800 square feet.
Okay, we have this where nothing can be changed if we approve this, it will only be three units, correct?
We can specify that in the zoning conditions, certainly, maximum of three lots.
And the reason for the septic tanks, would you please clarify that?
I think the applicant would be better suited to answer that question. Yes.
So this doesn't have access to sewer?
So the Henry County Water and Sewer Authority, in a letter, did specify that water and sewer was available to the subject property. However, it's my understanding that because it's a simple lot division and not a subdivision, that due to that, it would not be required to, not obligated to connect to public sewer.
And is the septic tank going to be above ground or underground?
That would be for a decision of the Environmental Health Department. To the best of my knowledge, they're all underground.
I really prefer this to be connected to a water and sewer and not have the septic tanks there, from what you're telling me that it is available.
That, yes, according to water letter, that's correct.
I want to have the applicant give me a reason for not connecting to the water and sewer that's available, that would be acceptable or unacceptable to this board, we need to hear more about that. Is the applicant here?
So this is a public hearing, persons wish to speak in favor of the request, including the applicant, will have 10 minutes to do so, so if you could come forward, state your name.
Hello and good evening, Xavier McKnight, I am the applicant. Want to address the first piece of it, the septic. I spent time with the director in Public, I guess you call it Public Works. We went over a sewage map. The sewage map would require me to, immediately as the owner, to run almost 800 feet of sewage down a trunk line going down the main road, and he helped me figure out some costs, basically $80,000 to $100,000 just to run it, because you have to run it for the duration of the entire property, which is why I did not choose R3, I went to R2, so you can use the septic. And I think you asked a question about the septic requirements, so I think it's almost like 30,000 square, I'm gonna say feet for right now, I'm sorry, I don't have everything on me, but you have to have that per lot, so each lot is about 200 feet across, so it has enough room to have the septic back and tucked away out of sight, underground, so that's the reason why we went from R3 to R2. So I think that answers the questions about why it's not public sewer, because we have the option to do R3 or R2, but I elected to do R2 because of the cost specifically.
So will each unit have their own separate septic tank?
Yes, ma'am, yep.
Okay.
Based on state and county guidelines, yep.
Well, it was?
I was gonna say, if it's not a condition now.
Please make it underground.
I don't think I've ever heard of a above-ground septic system, at least in the county, as far as I'm aware, in recent times.
There is another process that, and I don't know the name of it, to some, maybe you can help, and when you're using a sewer system, that they have to reinforce the pipes around it so you don't have an intrusion or breakage from trees and other things. Can we put that in this requirement if we allow him to do that? I'm concerned about the septic tanks and what's around it.
So EPA has the requirements that he has to abide by.
So go by that.
So it's nothing, I mean, even if we put something in, whatever EPA says, it out-trumps anything that we put in.
To protect the conditions.
Right, and that's why I was just gonna go, the guidelines are set for that size property, you gotta have a certain size, it's gotta be a certain amount of feet, working house, so it has to follow all of that. So, yep, I do have one more question.
Are there any other concerns then that we have to be aware of? I really don't have as big a concerns, but we're only talking about three units. If it was more, I would be really, really concerned, but is there anything else, Kenta, that concerns you about this?
I will note that we did, at the zoning advisory board meeting, hear some concerns about buffers between the existing Bella Landing lots that back up to this subject property, and the zoning advisory board did require Condition 9, rather, they recommended Condition 9, 10-foot under-stirred buffer to the rear of the subject property. But that backing up off of, onto Mosley Road and that buffer were the main concerns. that backing up off of, onto Mosley Road and that buffer were the main concerns, as I recall, in the zoning advisory board meeting.
Okay, alright.
And if I could follow up on number nine, if a tree falls within this 10-foot buffer, would I be responsible for that onto the neighbor's property, since I can't touch that or in any, any kind of way?
Yes, you would still be responsible if the tree is on your property.
Okay, Board of Commissioners, having heard the...
This is a public hearing, so we've got, we've got to allow anyone that wants to speak in opposition to come forward. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Please come forward. Okay, sir, if you could, y'all let him have, have the mic.
Hi, my name is Charles Lane. I live at 65 Bennington Court, the subdivision that's adjacent to these lots. One thing I keep hearing is that Mr. McKnight also owns the six acres across the street, kind of adjacent to this property. What I have a feeling he's doing is he's getting his foot in the door with this R1, R2 zoning, so that this six acres can be also changed. He's setting a precedence here. I would like the board to make a note of this, so that later on, if he does come back to try to have this six acres rezoned R2, that we can, it's a definite pattern, because nothing else around here, or everything around here is RA. So he is setting a precedence by having these three lots rezoned R2. Thank you.
Sir, I have a question. Does, does this change our comp plan if we do this rezoning? Is this in, in violation of our comprehensive plan?
That's an excellent question. The comprehensive plan, future land use map designation for this subject property is low-density, which would support up to two dwelling units per net acre. That was three lots. That density, net density is 1.1. The low-density residential future land use map designation would support up to an R3 designation. So, so short answer is, the comp plan does support this request.
I will say, Chair, I will not support any, anything greater than a three-house unit on sewer. So the demand that was concerned by we setting a precedent, if indeed that came back with six acres and 20 homes, not sewer, I mean, septic tank, I would not support anything greater than that, because I am not in support of septic tanks all around Henry County. Three units I can support, but anything greater than a three unit on a huge subdivision, I could not support.
So I have...
Not in this report.
So I have a question. What is in this area that, that we're, what currently, what type of residential is currently in this area?
Okay, so this is the current zoning map, obviously, to the west and south of this subject property, shown in green. We have the subdivision that is zoned for both R2 and R3 purposes. To the east of the subject property is zoned RA, a little bit to the north is zoned R1.
It's a combination of different zonings in that area?
Yes, that's correct.
Did we get any type of renderings from this particular applicant at all of what he intends to build?
Point of clarification, that is the Bella Landing subdivision. As far as elevations, we did not receive any elevations, though. Bella Landing does require four sides brick and masonry. To reflect that, we did have, we did add that as a part of a condition.
So do we have anything to look at to determine what value of homes that we're looking at? And I have not met with this applicant at all. So that's concerning, that I don't have any type of renderings to look at, Kenta. This is very unusual for us.
And I have, I have a question. Is the, so is this in a subdivision? Y'all come and help me.
This property is outside of the subdivision.
It's outside of the subdivision. So these other little yellow boxes, are those homes?
That is, that is correct, yes.
And they sit on, and they're, they're zoned what?
That is zoned R3.
They're zoned R3 as well. Are they on septic?
Sewer.
So this would be the only three lots in between those homes that would be on septic?
On this side of the Mosley Road, that's correct. Everything on the west, on the east side is zoned RA with septic.
Okay, I think we need to reconsider some things. Chair, I'd like to table this.
Okay. Can we table it to the next meeting?
I'd like to meet with the applicant and you, Kenta. We need to work out some things here. I have not had the opportunity to meet the applicants. We don't have renderings of what he's building. I don't know price values of what you're building. I don't know if it's complementing the area. So we need a lot more information. So please get on my agenda, Kenta, with this applicant, and let's go through this, so I have something credible to present to this board. And I don't have that tonight.
Understood.
And we'll table it to the June 4th meeting.
Can we do afternoon meeting, second meeting in June?
Okay, second meeting in June, whatever date that is. What date is that, Stephanie? 16th?
I don't have a calendar, sorry, in front of me.
June 20th, okay. Table it to June 20th.
Thank you, ma'am. Do you have a motion?
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. Can I get a motion, Commissioner?
I'd like to put forth the motion to table this item until the June 20th, or June 16th, the 20th you say? June 20th meeting.
Okay, she got a motion. Got a second. If there's no discussion, all in favor. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have anyone else signed up for public comment, Stephanie?
No, ma'am.
Okay. The ULDC is going to be tabled to another, to a future time. Okay, so approval of the minutes for the May 2nd, 2023, regular scheduled board meeting. Can I get a motion to approve? Okay, second. All in favor? Our upcoming meetings and events, we have transportation town hall meetings from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM on June 6th, June 3, June 6th at the Henry County Administration Building, June 13th at the Locust Grove Event Center, June 27th at the Black Box Theater at Nash Farm, and June 29th, Merriman's Event Center in Stockbridge. June 6, 2023, at 9:00 AM is a regular scheduled BOC meeting. June 20th, 2023, at 6:30 is a regular scheduled BOC meeting. I need to, a motion to enter into executive session for personnel matter. Got a motion? Can I get a second?
Second.
I'd like to call for a motion to reconvene from executive session. The second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I'd like approval of, get a motion for approval of the affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session. Second?
Second.
All in favor? We need to, so we need to take a vote pertaining to executive session. So ask for a motion to approve amendment number eight to ACCG defined benefit plan for Henry County Employees Adoption Agreement. Can I get a motion?
Where is it?
This pertaining to the executive session, this regarding the early retirement.
Motion to approve.
Okay, second.
Is that correct? Is that what? Okay, Nancy, is that right?
Yeah, that's fine. I was just talking, I don't have a copy of the resolution, but yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So in your books, you should have a amendment number eight to the ACCG defined, defined benefit plan for Henry County Employees Adoption Agreement for a normal retirement on or after May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Is that what we're asking? Okay, so can I get a motion for that?
She, she made a motion.
Okay, got a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Got a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor. Okay, awesome, meeting adjourned. Everyone have a great evening.